Tell.
Okay, not a whole lot to report on. I did file the local laws that we passed last month for the moratorium extension. I did, well, we sort of provisionally filed the parking law, but we've got to get approval from the DOT to attach to it. So, once we get that approval, then it'll be formal.
We didn't approve the parking law.
We didn't do the parking law yet?
No. We reviewed it, had a lot of feedback. We've got some follow-ups we need to do that we were unable to do over the last couple of weeks. So, we're going to be on hold for that one probably till the new year.
All right, let me look then. Obviously, I didn't file it, but I just want to make sure that I didn't send it inadvertently. No, we're okay. I pulled that out. So, we just filed the moratorium extension. I've been helping out our two new code enforcement officers. They're doing a really good job and they're starting to get unburied and learning the ropes and getting everything done. So, they're doing well. It's very encouraging. Also, did some research. We had a question about the revolving loan fund and whether eligibility would be available to some folks if they had a mixed use. In other words, they were living in the premises upstairs, but had a commercial use downstairs. And the definitions do say that a mixed use like that, as long as there's some historic value to the building, does provide eligibility for those folks that might want to tap into that. And last, the community center project is back on hold. The town wants to have another sit down with us and we're trying to set that up.
I sent an email earlier asking to do it on Monday.
I saw that ping in, yeah.
Um. So, currently, and this is probably something MJ, maybe we'd put it on the agenda early in the new year to take a look at this revolving loan. We talked about it, I think, at the last meeting. We ought to do kind of a comprehensive review of it. Um, is it available for commercial properties right now, Tell?
For mixed use, yes. As long as there's a residential component to the property and the owners are there, yes.
So, the owner has.
Or if it's rented also.
Okay, okay. But, so mixed-use waterfront, if it were a totally commercial utilization of it, it would not be eligible, is what you're saying?
No. At least, that's my reading of it. I mean, you may want to change those regulations. At this point, I think we're so far removed, you can make modifications. But, yes, that's the way it is right now.
All right, we'll plan to do a review of that early next year. Take a look at what we need to do with that.
You want me to resend that packet? I put together the, you know, the information, the bylaws and guidelines. And also, it was based on, it's kind of income-based as well. So, we may want to look at those numbers to make sure that the eligibility requirements are consistent with today's income as opposed to those from 20 years ago.
Yeah, if you've got it handy, if you wouldn't mind sending it back out, I think that'd be.
Okay, I'll have to dig around here a little bit, but I think I've got it.
Good. All right, is that it, Tell?
That's it for me.
Trying to think what I've got. I talked to Lois at the Stewart House. She sent me, they got another letter. I'll forward it to you just so you have it for your file.
Okay. All right. I didn't know whether you wanted to talk about that or not. That's why I went more general with the code enforcement stuff.
No, no, I think, I think the balls, we need a my court or her court right now to figure out how we go about it next and make some phone calls.
Yeah, if I can do that, let me know.
Legally, there's limited recourse. I looked at, you know, the section they're quoting. It says, you know, it must exit directly to the street in, I forget exactly what it says, but it doesn't say the door has to open out to the street, but it has to, it says it has to open, it has to give you direct access to the external building in an expeditious manner or something like that. You can infer from it that the door has to open that way, but it doesn't state it outright. So, I'm sure that's their interpretation of it. So, I'll take some more look at it and we'll see where we go with it.
What are we, what are we talking about?
Uh, the Department of Health, the Stewart House has been in kind of a running gun battle with the Department of Health over code enforcement. Department of Health and code enforcement issues. Specifically, they started with, they wanted to, they wanted them to put a fire escape on the back. And then, they said, well, they can use the internal fire stairwell, but the doors have to open out. And the doors can't physically open out without, you know, building structures on the sidewalk, etc. So, we'll figure something out with them.
Okay.
Okay. Meeting on Monday. Um, you're not on copy for any of these Hecate or Flint Mine impact statements from the attorneys that we use with that. Maybe I'll forward you some of the stuff. It's, it's all, there's, there's one paragraph in each of the impact statements that are, you know, my portion of it, but you should at least be aware. I'll forward you, I'll forward you as I'm watching it. It's all, for the village, it's all just about impact of the combined cumulative effect of runoff on erosion of the Sleep Hollow Dam. It's the only dog we've got in the fight, but I'll forward you the.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a look.
Okay. Questions for Tell?
No.
No.
DP double.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I don't have much. Just that we took the floats out of the river. We cut down what trees had to come down. We're working on the salt shed. The walls are all up. We had it paved. But, in the quote that I gave you guys, I forgot the spray asphalt for the inside. They coat the walls so that the salt don't eat the walls. It's $1,700 for peckups of spray. And I'd rather do it that way. I did contact the guy about a concrete sealer, but I'm not so sure on how well it would work on the inside. What I purchased, that was $570. But, if we could get the inside sprayed with the asphalt, I could use that on the outside to seal the blocks from the outside because the salt won't be on the outside, but I like to seal it anyway. So, it's up to you guys if you want to use that sealer on the inside or go with the asphalt on the inside. It's going to be $1,700 more.
Do you have it in your equipment budget right now?
I think we still have money in the salt budget there. I don't think, I don't, we, I think we, I give you a quote for like $15,000. I don't think we're quite there yet.
Okay, um. Maybe we sit down tomorrow, look, just kind of update that, make sure we're clean on it. But, if I can get a resolution to approve that, we'll do it predominantly out of the salt shed budget, but if we need to, we'll go into the DPW equipment budget. Sound reasonable?
Yeah. That way, I could tell, that way, I could tell them tomorrow because I got to talk to the salesman tomorrow because time's running out now. Everything's shutting down. I called the doorman about it and they had already shut down. Peckums are pretty much the only ones that are still open right now.
All right, uh, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll first.
Rob?
I'll second it.
Ricky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the building's coming along well. They're putting the drop ceilings in the, in the office and bathroom and the break room. They ran out of material for the inside ceiling through G and H. They shorted them by like 30 panels, but apparently they went through Curtis lumber and they have it right in stock. So, that should be in any day. And it's going along well. The doors.
It looks like we're in by Thanksgiving though, huh?
No, no. The main doors are supposed to, the overhead doors are supposed to be here next week.
Okay.
Once they finish the ceiling, then the plumber can come in and do the heat in the corners.
Okay.
So, that's about all I have.
So, what are we thinking now? I talked to Jason earlier today, but I didn't ask him for a completion date. I should have. Are we still thinking before the new year?
Yeah, I think it'll be before new year. I think it's going to be around the middle of December.
Okay, he said, we've had four showings, as you probably know.
Yes, yes.
This thing, DPW.
Yeah, we've been sitting outside when we're waiting to take our break. We would sit outside waiting for people to know. So, it's all good. That's about all I have.
Um, Anthony and Rob, we need a response for that Nymer letter?
All right, um, yeah, I checked the Nymer about, probably about a week ago now. I'll check it again tomorrow. I got to refresh myself on that letter. What kind of training you're looking for? Is it the workplace violence or?
I don't recall. I don't recall.
All right, I gotta, I gotta look at that letter again.
Yeah, MJ, can you resend that letter to Rob? We at least need to get them something, asking them for a two-week extension or something, Rob?
Okay.
Tomorrow, yeah.
The workplace violence thing, we used to do with Roger.
I don't remember that that's what the training was. It was for the recreation directors.
I think it's for playground safety. It was the rec program. Well, I'll resend it to you. I think I have a scanned document of it.
All right, thank you.
One other thing I just thought of. Amy, can you put it on the community board that we're picking up leaves?
Sure.
And it's probably going to be a one-shot deal once we go past your road?
Okay.
Because I don't know what the weather's going to do.
And no sticks in the leaves either.
I was just going to say that. Could you mention not to put those sticks in there? We started today and within 100 feet, we had three plug-ups with some of the sticks.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure if people knew that. No sticks.
Mayor, you better get out there and make your lease tonight because we're going to be there tomorrow morning.
I'm going to go get some sticks.
I never make it, I never make it to the curb with my leaves ever. They just sit in the yards until the next year and then I end up taking them in the trash pile.
That's all I have is just.
All right, so I talked about, we need a Nymer response. So, Rob, give me a call tomorrow. Send you that, resend you the letter. I talked to Jason today about the lighting plan. And I also asked him to kind of put together a little bit of a, just a small landscaping plan for the DPW building as well, for some trees, potentially some fencing. Wayne, I'd like to kind of get a sense of what the fire department would like. You know, would you like a fence between the fire department, you know, just a privacy fence or some trees or something there to kind of block that area?
Say, no, I would leave it the way it is because, I mean, you're putting out, you're building this nice building, why hide it? I mean, it's not affecting us one bit.
Okay, well, I'll talk to Jason about that. Anything else for the DPW?
There was an issue with the couple of trees down there. I see it down at the bottom of the gen. I don't know if you want to bring it up now or wait or it's up to you. You're mayor.
Oh, me or Anthony? I'm fine to talk about it now. I, I know that tree, Anthony, and I went and took a look at the one right there in the front over the top of the fuel tank.
Yes.
I see you cut it way back. I'd be inclined to see what it does in the spring at this point with as much as you cut it back.
Okay.
You know how healthy it looks in the spring.
Yeah, the other one needs to come down. Did you look at that?
I wasn't sure about, no, so I wasn't sure where that one was.
I got it. I got, I was down there the other day. I got a picture of Anthony sticking about three foot of the handle of the rake down in the hole under the trunk. It's rotted right out and it's right up against a brand-new, it's going to be right up against a brand-new salt shed. I just can't see, you know, spending all that kind of money.
It's not that big a tree then, right? I looked.
It's not that big, but it's, it's rotted all inside.
All right.
We trimmed a lot of that one out also that was hanging over the block.
I can send you a picture of this picture.
I didn't see any trees there that look significant. They're not, they're not, it's not a real big tree. Rotted out. Go ahead if you want to take it out now, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
What else for DPW? Any other questions from the board for DPW? We're letting, we're letting Anthony off easy this week. All right, Wayne, what you got for the fire department?
All right, um, first thing is going to be the gear. Um, we were declined the grant to outfit everybody with new gear. So, we have another option. It's a loan to purchase 13 of the athletic sets and five of the classic sets. Basically, the classic sets are for the drivers and exterior only.
So, that's, that's not what you had in the spreadsheet you sent me. You sent me 15. That would block yes essentially.
Yeah, Dom, I actually, for some reason, a couple of them were marked yes for, then they're actually probation guys right now. They haven't even gone through any training. So, they will not get it until the next round.
All right, so give me the name, give me the number again then. What was the number?
13 of the athletics and five of the classics.
Okay, so what this is for the rest of the board, it's essentially, it's a zero-interest loan for five years or zero-interest financing for five years. The reason I think this makes sense is we need to get off of this, all of our gear coming due at the same time. We've got a small window of opportunity where we can do this. Over five years, have most everyone outfitted out. Those who have to wait five years are in decent shape. And we'll get the predominance of the most active outfitted now in more up-to-date equipment. That'll let us, you know, in 10 years, we can break it up again and hopefully kind of get onto a, a little bit more of an affordable two-and-a-half-year cycle or something where we're, we're breaking it up a little bit and refreshing gear on a more routine basis. So, the net of it is 13 sets of A gear, five sets of B gear over five years at 14,700 and something per year, right, Wayne?
Yeah, it's 14,951.48. And that's with a down payment of 7,500 out of the equipment budget this year. Like, you put down 75,000 out of the equipment budget this year, every year for the next five years, it'd be 14,951 coming out of my equipment budget for the next five years.
Uh, so I didn't get that part. So, you're looking for that's your, that's your whole equipment budget. That's 20.
No, that's, that's, we're, we plan 15,000 now every year to outfit three, three members. So, basically, that 15,000 on these, all this other gear.
No, I get that. I get that the 15,000 is in budget, but you said another 7, 7,500 out of the equipment.
No, 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 this year, no, it was, it, this year would only be 7,500 out of the budget. Next year, starting next year, would be the 14,951.
All right, what do you have remaining in your equipment budget today?
I believe I am around 22,000.
Okay, and there's no, we're not doing any equipment purchase this year then? No fire equipment purchase this year?
Well.
Sorry, no, no gear purchase this.
Oh, yeah, no, no gear. No, well, if this, this lumps on, but no, that those three sets would not be.
All right, so we had 15,000 budgeted this year. Out of this year's budget, we're only going to spend 7,500 as a down payment. And then, we'll begin our 15,000 a year essentially, starting next year for the 15 sets of A, 13 sets of A and five sets of B. And then, well, we send the spreadsheet to everyone on the board. It would, there were a total, I believe, was it 19 or 22 sets of A gear needed? This got the bulk of them.
Yeah, it was, um, I got the list right here.
I have 15 in green.
Yep, but that's only 13 now.
Okay, that's what I meant, 14, sorry. Somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
There were green yeses and black yeses.
Yeah.
On the sheet.
Yeah, the green, the green yeses were the combination of the both. And the blacks were the, I mean, you see that, the ones that got them in the past couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
Yeah.
I did the math on, last night on 15 of the athletics, but I think it's, it's pretty much the same if you only get 13 of those. And how many of the classics were you saying? Five? Three?
Uh, five in the classic.
Five in the classic, yeah.
So, I actually got about almost 32 members on my list that have gear.
Not all A gear though.
No, not all A gear.
Right, I was, it's 13 out of roughly 20-ish A gear.
Yeah, yeah.
Put this in pretty good shape. Okay. What other discussion? Any other questions from the board? Wayne's got a two-hour sales pitch prepared. Don't jip him now.
He already, he already sold me. I'm sold.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve a $7,500 down payment in a five-year, 0% financing of the 13 sets of A gear and five sets of B gear in accordance with the proposal that that Wayne has?
I will.
I'll second it.
Rob, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? Anything else, Wayne?
Yep, um, the surplus stuff. I have a list of everything that I'd like to put on. I have, I had something to go through. I got most of the serial numbers of the packs and a total of the packs, masks and bottles and the pagers and radios that I want to put on Auction International, including the 82 Ford rescue truck.
Okay.
So, I have 17 packs, 41 bottles, steel bottles, 26 masks, 17 mini or five pagers and all the pagers and radios are all low-band, no longer in use in this county. Um, 11 portable radios, four mobile radios, one six-bank portable charging and one encoder.
All right, does anyone need to see that list written down with serial numbers or are you comfortable voting it into surplus now?
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with that.
I would it.
Okay with that.
What's up?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, send us, send the list at least to MJ and Amy so they have it.
Okay.
But, so we need to pass a resolution to move to surplus the list, the items on Wayne's list. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I will.
Amy?
Second.
Gail's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who carries?
Um, yeah, sorry, I didn't write out a report. I was a little busy last night. We're fixing a new wifi system in the firehouse. I will double it up next month for you.
All right.
And the only other thing I got is, um, I don't know what's in the code right now for, uh, the key boxes on businesses. We now have, it's called Knox box system in our trucks. The school is on board. They, they are mounting a box. What it is, is we get a call, like there's a school, we can gain access without waiting for a key holder. So, or break down a door or something like that on a business. So, I don't know what you guys, what is in the code right now, but it is something that could be offered to the businesses in the village. Um, I, I'm going to get more information on Knox because, like I said, it works really good. The keys are mounted in the truck. You can just walk up to a box, open a secured box on the front of the building and allows us in the, into the business.
Can you send, yeah, if you've got some info on it, why don't you send it off to the board?
Sure. All right. That's, that's all I got.
Questions for Wayne?
No, but I have to go backwards because there's a question in the chat to DPW. You guys already started the leaf sucking?
Yeah, we started on Franklin Street today.
Okay, um, so I'll just say that it's happening now and it's still, you don't have like a specific route that you take, right? So, people won't know exactly the day.
No, we're doing Franklin Street because that's the longest street.
Okay.
Get done. And then, we'll probably, we'll probably end up going up Second Street and have scary turnpike because some people have been on Facebook about scary turnpike that their leads, so they'll get picked up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just basically say, get them out there fast and don't park on top of them.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Carry on.
Anything else for Wayne? All right, Gail, you want to talk police? I don't see Roger on, right?
I'm here.
Oh, there you go. How are you, Roger?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. What do you got?
Uh, well, it last month was pretty quiet. We even had a very quiet Halloween. No problems, no rest, no, nothing significant to talk about. Uh, I'm sure you all received the email that I sent you, a press release for last week. And the only thing I'll say about that is that Ed did a good job on that. And that's pretty much all I have.
Uh, did we get you keys?
Nope.
No, I haven't gotten them.
Hey, can we get them this week?
I, with all due respect, I really don't like giving out keys to the village clerk's office.
Comfortable giving them to the chief of police?
Well, as long, you know, I mean, there's 15 people in that department and we've gone through this like four years ago. And I just, I mean, if you order me to do it, I will, but I really don't feel comfortable giving out keys to the village clerk's office.
I, what's, I think it's fair for Roger to have them and Ed is a backup and that's it. And one set of keys that Roger and Ed are allowed to use.
Are they going to be the only ones using them?
Yeah, Roger, you have a problem with that?
No, I have no problem. I just don't understand quite the issue here. We secure just about everything else in the village. That's what our job is. And if there has been a problem in the past, nothing has ever been brought to my attention.
There were problems four years ago.
We're not going to go any further than that without going into executive.
I didn't want to bring it up.
Can if we want.
Like I said, nothing, nothing has ever been brought to my attention. And if there had been a problem, it should have been brought to my attention.
Okay, that, let's, I do want Roger to have a set of keys.
Okay, but on that word though, I would like to go into an executive session after this is over.
Okay.
Regarding that.
Okay. What else, Roger?
Uh, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
What's going on with the speed detector, whatever that thing is?
Oh, yeah, I forgot. That, something malfunctioned inside that and it had to be sent back to the factory.
Outside of our 30-day window on that one, we are, aren't we?
Uh, no, it's still under warranty.
Warranty, but we're, we're inside our decision point.
Oh, yeah, we're past that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so when do we get it back?
Uh, I would have to check with Officer Russo who actually dealt with the, the tech at the manufacturer.
If it's going to be long, see if they'll give us something to substitute so we can get something out on North Franklin Street?
I'm not thinking it will be. It seems like there was some sort of power issue that it was not like a internal fuse or something had blown.
Okay. Okay. Other questions for Roger?
I, while Roger's on the title for the old police car, or I think you were doing a VIN verification board or something. We couldn't find the title. I think that's what the case was.
Because I know, that I know of all the titles that have been, ever been received, went to the clerk's office. We haven't found one. And I believe Mary Jo filed for a new one.
All right, um, yeah, because I had Auctions International come down this morning and they're looking for it. So, we're going to have to do something. So, that's all.
I wouldn't think that would be too difficult as long. I wouldn't think that would be too difficult as long as we get the paperwork to DOV.
All right, okay. That's all I have.
Anything else for Roger?
Um, we have, somebody wants to ask a question in the chat. Annika.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to, well, last week, we had a, our Black Lives Matter sign, yard sign was removed from our property, we assume during the evening. And I did call the police and left a message with, I guess their, I don't know if it was the state police, but someone who, I guess, responds to calls that come in and had just requested that the local police give me a call back, which I didn't receive. So I'm curious if that message was sent through to the local police. And in addition to that, I, it sounds like this might be somewhat of a problem because in regards to sign stealing, because our neighbor had a few yard signs also stolen and found in his trash. Um, so, yeah, I'm just trying to find out if, if there's some sort of different procedure I should have gone through to, to send in this complaint or concern.
It's always best if you don't try to send us a message, just have, ask for an officer to respond. They will, if we're not available, they will send a trooper or deputy and let them take the complaint, and then they should send us a copy of that report. They normally communicate that. But I know of no messages ever been received from you to, that you had an issue.
Okay, that's good to know. I mean, I think I had told the, the officer I spoke with over the phone that I didn't see this as some sort of emergency, so I didn't necessarily feel like it was necessary for the police to come out, just assuming they had probably other things that were more important, but, um, so I guess I'll.
That's something a report should have been taken on.
Okay, so should I call then tomorrow and ask that an officer come out?
Uh, you're better off to call right now. You know, I don't want to exchange any information over, I don't know who's listening here, but if you could just call our number, the dispatch will answer and ask them to have an officer come by and see you.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Sorry about that.
All right, anything else for Roger?
No.
All right, I don't believe we have code enforcement on today.
I think so, no.
So they have been organizing, and they have started issuing building permits. They're starting to catch up with the list now of items that they've got. We got, we got them some help from a Catskill clerk to make sure we had all the paperwork, et cetera, that we needed. So they are up and running marginally at this point, but they're, they're making leaps and bounds, so I expect we'll get through the list of, of items that they had to burn down. We're getting the building permits issued. They are attending planning board meetings and helping with the Stewart House issue that we discussed earlier. North Dome, Joe.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Joe.
Did you receive the monthly report, Stefan?
We did, yes.
Okay, good. Do you want me to go down the report, or has everyone read it, or do you have any questions?
You know what, Joe, would you mind? I briefly looked at it, and I can't remember what I read right now.
So, okay, so everything pretty much was consistent with prior months at the water plant. Backwash flows, we had no alarm callouts for the month of October. We did have a power storm, a bad storm on the seventh of October. Generators were online. Central Hudson had power back relatively shortly. We removed fourteen tons of dried fudge from the drying beds up at the water plant. Uh, we cleaned the fluoride injection system, and we had to replace a waste gate on the number-two filter. Thirty-seven North Street, compliance was met for the month. Average daily flow was two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand gallons a day. We, on average, wasted about eighteen-hundred gallons a day of activated fudge. We transported six-thousand gallons up to the city of Albany for final disposal. We had one major rain event. It was about one-point-nine-five inches. Our flow at the plant did go up and exceeded four-hundred-thousand gallons for the day. But being that we do a thirty-day average, you know, we're still compliant with our speed.
So it was only one day of exceedance, is what you're saying?
Well, we didn't really have an exceedance because we're allowed to do the thirty-day average. I just wanted to point out that, that, you know, as, as we get those heavy rain events, we do see that spike in the flows. That's all. Brick Row, everything is pretty much status quo there. It's running good. We're averaging about four-thousand gallons a day. Essentially, that's it for the monthly report.
Okay, so I, I think I reported at the last meeting that the developer up at Brick Row had reached out to me and told me he was not going to be doing anything anytime soon. He reached out to me earlier this week and told me he does have a developer who wants to start on eight houses.
Oh, okay.
Also, last week, there was somebody interested in the seventeen acres just to the, would it be south of Brick Row, the waterfront acreage right there to the south?
Yeah.
Um, they want to do, and they would need special permit and everything else for this, and, and I'm not sure that it's covered under the mixed-use waterfront special permitting, and there's a moratorium anyway right now, but they want to do sort of glamping with some permanent structures and mostly semi-permanent structures. So there's planning board concerns, et cetera, there, but they wanted to inquire about, you know, sewer tie-in there as well. So there's interest. We may start to see some interest in Brick Row. What I'd like to get from you is, and I think we talked about it, is there, is there any way with some investment to expand Brick Row capability? If not, how do we start looking at what it's going to take to get Brick Row down the street, if you will, to the main plant? And what those costs and stuff are going to look like, because we're going to obviously ask these developers to do that, if they're looking to get in there.
Yeah.
So I reached out to Jason as well on the same thing, so I'm sure he'll be talking to you about it.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you, if you would like, I could, I could reach out to Jason and just, you know, start that process of evaluating.
Yep, touch base with him. I talked to him about it. I just want to start to get a sense of, you know, if I'm going to start talking to them about, you know, asking them to make investments in this, I need to have some sense of what's going to be involved. I don't need details. I just need a sense.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The concept of what exactly, what, what we could possibly do.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, all right, awesome. New users, more users.
That's right. Anything else, anything else, Joe?
I think that, unless you guys have, oh, we have, tentatively, we have the flush scheduled for the week, starting, I guess, the first of December. I know it's kind of late, and it's going to be weather dependent. So, but right now, we tentatively are going to attack that, starting that, that week.
Okay. Let's make sure as we get the info to Amy, so it goes out on the.
I got it. I mean, I got, yeah, they sent a really good, real good explanation of everything that I can put up, so people have questions. It's really, it's really clear. So I got that. I'm just kind of, I'll post it next week, and then I'll probably repost it, so it's closer to the thing, because next week's going to be crazy for everyone. Yeah, I got that info.
Amy, does that, does that usually go to the, the board at the sewer plant also? Will it be posted there, or?
Um, well, I would post it, I'm going to put it on the blog, so it'll get, so all the subscribers directly, and then I would do it on the social media. But physically, like a hard copy of it? Uh, oh, you mean the big board on the, on the street?
Yeah, the big board, the street board.
Uh, Anthony?
Yeah, I can contact Big Ricky Serrano, and he usually puts it on a board for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Cool.
Okay.
So I think we're covered there.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Okay. All right, thank you, Joe.
All right, guys. Enjoy.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-eighth?
I'll offer.
Rob?
I'll second. That was Gail.
That was Gail? Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
So, so carries. Was anyone able to review the vouchers?
Yes. The only thing I didn't know what it was is the services for solar project review due from other governments.
That is the attorneys that were paying for the the intervenor funding stuff, although it should have all been funded via intervenor fundings, right, MJ? Didn't she respond in the email?
Yeah, yeah, that's going to come out of the intervenor funding. Okay. Which we have to apply for. Okay. That was the only thing.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve vouchers?
I will.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who carries? Okay, everyone got the seeker for the comprehensive plan? It lists the village and town boards as co-lead agency.
I did put a link to that in the chat, because it should have, I should have probably attached it to the agenda that I sent out in the blog, so if anybody wants to read this really long resolution in full, there's a link in the chat.
Okay, and this does require a full, a full environmental assessment, Tell?
Yes, the new comp plan or an updated comp plan is a type-one action, and any type-one action requires the full EAF, yes.
All right. So, so the, the town board will need to make the same resolution, is that right, MJ, or Tell?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, any questions on this?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the resolution? Intend to be co-lead agency identification of a type-one action for adoption of the comprehensive plan.
I'll offer that.
Neil?
I'll second.
Amy? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Let's see here, we got a list. First, the town is looking to, I guess, upgrade the West Athens Lime Street Fire District. They're going to take down a couple of small brick buildings, put up a twelve-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot fire department there. It's on Skahery, where they are today, relocate the fire tower that they have. This is going out, asking if other agencies want to participate in the seeker process. I don't particularly see any reason to. Do you, Tell?
No, I really don't. It's, it's quite minor.
Any other questions or concerns on that?
No.
All right, Anthony, Chip's application? Still with us, Anthony?
With, I don't, yeah.
You got, you got a letter to apply for Chip's funding?
It's just that statement that tells you how much you have. I think I gave it to you, Anthony. Looks like we're like halfway.
Yeah. When I read it, it looks like there's action required, but if not, just.
No, it basically just tells you how much money you have left for the.
Yeah, they just let you know what you spent and what you have left, and they'll roll over and stuff like that.
Okay. The next one is from this Champlain Hudson Power, and I just, because it's been bothering me that we've been looking at this for a while. Finally, I spent an hour today trying to find the maps and stuff. It runs down the train tracks in Hudson, but it does come across the river, and I contacted the Lighthouse Group today, because the, the way they've got it run, it looks like it comes awfully close. Now, it may be that those are existing lines today. But I just wanted to make sure that the, the Lighthouse Group was comfortable with where it's going and potentially see if they can get them to repair the broken electrical line that currently runs to the Lighthouse, if they are going to be out there doing that, so. This is just more on that, and then the, the next one is a public hearing on the same topic on December first, if anyone's interested in that. That, if, if you're interested, because it's a pain in the neck to find all the documentation, it runs, like I said, down to, just to the south end of the middle ground flats, and then crosses the river kind of gradually, making it over to the west side of the river, somewhere down around Cahote. But it does come close to the to the Lighthouse was my only concern. It doesn't, otherwise, it doesn't come near the village of Athens, but it does impact the Lighthouse, is my concern. Okay. Flint Mine Solar, both the Flint Mine and the Hecate basically accepted the litigation, basically their letters that accept the litigation. In one case, extend the timeline in order to cover litigation, and the other time, it just finds that the issues prescribed by the parties are appropriate subject matters for testimony. So all of our concerns will be heard in both cases, it sounds like. Again, our only concern from a village standpoint is impact on the sleepy holiday. Um, we got charged a hundred dollars from the town for calling out their code enforcement on, during the Stella's Fire. So Wayne, just so you're, Wayne's not on there anymore. We should be using our code enforcement from here out, but I understand why we did it last time.
I just saw you.
Yeah, I, I would have been on sooner, but I unplugged it off.
There we go.
All right, and it, it looks like you're having some connectivity issues, but I'll, Wayne and I talked about that. I'll talk to him some more about it. All right, any other questions on correspondence? New business, Green County Planning Board, two-thirty-nine referral form. Just a form that was sent to the Green County on our comprehensive plan. They're a, I don't know if they're an approver, but they do have a review of, it's a mandatory review of the comprehensive plan by the county planning board, so that was sent.
Under section two-thirty-nine of the general municipal law, whenever, there are a number of different types of projects that need to be referred to the county planning board. Typically, it's something from the planning board that says, you know, the town plan or village planning board saying, you know, we've got a site plan review or a major subdivision that's within five-hundred feet of the village line or a town, county road, and so then the county has to review it for any county-wide potential impacts. And the development of a new or updated comprehensive plan is also on that list of items that needs to have that two-thirty-nine referral. They'll send it back to us most likely and say it's a local issue. There's no county-wide or intermunicipal impact, so just go ahead and pass it when you're ready.
Okay. I wasn't able to make a meeting this week. I had a work meeting Tuesday night, so I don't know if they got to it this week or not. Uh, I wasn't able to make a meeting this week. I had a work meeting Tuesday night, so I don't know if they got to it this week or not. DPW Trees, I think we covered?
Mm-hmm.
Airbnb registrations. MJ, did you have something on that one or?
Yeah, we've, we've gotten quite a few registration forms in. However, there's a few people that haven't applied yet for the, for the usage, for the, the, um, certificate or whatever. So according to the law, apparently we have to kind of hand that over to code enforcement so that they can take it the next step further. The way I read it, is that correct, Tell?
Sorry, yes, I was muted.
So, yeah, so there's a few and, and they're, they're, they've been Airbnbs for quite a while, so it's quite clear that they are. So should I hand the binder over to the code enforcement now?
Yeah, it's done.
So you see me on it as well, but yeah, hand it over to them.
Thanks MJ. Yeah.
Okay, single-side parking on North Franklin Street. I just had MJ put it on there. I think we covered, you know, the main topic. I just wanted to talk about it so we didn't lose sight of it, but until we get, uh, the, the speed study done on North Franklin, I don't know that it's worth having any more significant conversation on that topic. I hope to be able to have further discussion on it, uh, at the December meeting, and then a public hearing again if necessary in the January meeting. So I think that's what we're looking at on the single-side parking issue on North Franklin. Make sense, everybody?
Yeah.
That's all we've got on the agenda. Amy?
I got nothing.
Nothing. Rob?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, I put a, we need the contract signed for Auctions International, uh, and, uh, I put it, put it in your mailbox.
Okay, I'll go by tomorrow and take care of it. I got a bunch of stuff to sign tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, if you could just stick the signed copy in my, uh, mailbox and I'll get it to Mark Smith from Auctions International.
Okay, will do.
He's going to need that to proceed. Um, the gentleman, uh, was sent down by Mark Smith, uh, Kevin, um, Resignio, I think his last name was, um, he represents Auctions International. He came down this morning and took, uh, pictures of the equipment and that. Um, there's only a small fee they take out for doing that for, out of each vehicle, but they do all the work, ninety percent of the work, more or less. They'll, they'll take all the pictures, write everything up, uh, put it on their website. Um, I think it's thirty dollars per vehicle, which is, you know, like I said, they take it out of the sale of the items when they sell. Uh, they are, they want to start the, a two-week auction at the very least on the vehicles on December first, ending on, uh, December fifteenth, when, uh, we, we have a meeting on the sixteenth, right? I think it is.
We're the ninth.
Oh, the ninth?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, they, um, well, they'll, they'll end the auction, um, and then at the next meeting, we can approve whether we, like, say the vehicles didn't sell at the price that we would have liked to, um, gotten for them. We had, we can have the option to, uh, reject the bids and put it back out to bid again, or just take it for what it is. Uh, the vehicles is where the most important, uh, part of the whole auction thing is going to be. Uh, the miscellaneous equipment like the utility trailer, uh, there's an old snow blower that, uh, we're selling down there in the sewer plant. It doesn't run. I think it will run with a little work. That stuff there, I mean, my recommendation is just to take what you get to get for it, more or less. Um, and be done with it, just to get it, get rid of it. You'll, you'll get some money for it, but, uh, just take what you can get for.
Yeah, we're not, now, we don't have to get back together and accept bids on all this stuff, right? It's.
Uh, we could, we could, we could.
I, I just assume honestly, put it in, in Rob's hands with, with maybe.
I mean, I, yeah, when the auctions end, I can send out an email to everybody, what everything ended at and get your feelings or whatever, and if, uh, everybody's okay with it, we can, I can tell Mark that we'll accept the bids and, uh, and then, you know, they'll take their, uh, buyer's premium matter out of the auctions and then, uh, send the, uh, difference after their fees are deducted to the, send a check to the village for, uh, the entire amount, whatever.
Do you have reserves on the vehicles? Are there, are there minimum reserves that we won't accept anything less than?
Um, no, we didn't do nothing like that. Um, uh, we, I could, like, we probably could do something like that. I know eBay does have a reserve option. Um, not sure on Auctions International. Uh, like I said, their, their version of the reserves would probably be leaving it, you know, giving us the option to reject the bids. Um, I think that's part of that contract you got to sign too. Um.
What we have on now, Rob?
Uh, we will be putting that ninety-nine international dump truck, uh, the two thousand six Ford pickup. Um, the old police car, once we get the title for, and then that nineteen eighty-two, uh, Ford, uh, the water rescue truck, um, that we.
They're all two-week auctions?
Yeah, we're going to run two-week au- uh, two-week auction on the vehicles and then the miscellaneous items. Um, you know, there's an old boat. We did the resolution on all that stuff a month or so ago.
Okay, why don't we plan to review any bids that we have on vehicles on the ninth?
Okay.
Anything else, like you said, I, I think we just would accept what we get on them. Any, any issues or concerns with that from the board?
No.
No.
Uh, alright, and if we, if we haven't, um, you know, if we, if they haven't been bid out or, you know, it hasn't closed, if you can just come on the ninth with what you think a minimum should be, you know?
Yeah.
We just approve.
I, I mean, I, I do have a, I do have a figure what that dump truck is worth. I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to get is, you know, anything less than this, we don't accept it. Anything above that, and you're, you're empowered to just accept it, so let's leave a meeting on the ninth with that kind of a, of a statement.
Alright. Uh, so that's it for Auctions International. Um, the only other thing is that big pile of, uh, bluestone, um, down, sitting in the weeds down there behind where the new building's being built. It's been there for three years. That was the stuff they, uh, removed from, uh, what was it, Third and South Franklin, I believe it was, three years ago. Uh, I don't know if you just want to put that up for sale or, uh, or whatever. Um, Anthony was asking me.
I, I see Anthony's head. I'll talk to you about that personally, Anthony. I, that's, uh, yeah, let's talk about that before we do anything with it.
Alright, um.
I'd like to see it go back up as curbing. I know you don't want to do that, but let's talk about it.
It's pretty, it's, I don't know. I, I just say, if it's been there three years and weeds growing around it, I just say get rid of it, but that's my opinion.
Take a look and I'll talk to Anthony about it. Don't, don't sell it yet.
Um, so that, that's all I have, uh, for tonight, so.
Gail?
Um, I don't really have anything, but, uh, that training you were talking about that Neymar wants, could that go through that, um, online training? That I researched, like, that might be something that we could do.
Yeah, I, I can check, uh, again, um, because I, I know, like, with the county does all their things, every, all their training now through Neymar now. I just did, uh, workplace violence, sexual harassment and everything through Neymar right online. Uh, but I can, I can check to see if it's available through there, yeah.
See what they've got.
And we should also do our workplace violence through that because that's past due also.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
For village.
Okay, let me, uh, I'll, I'll see if I can find a link. If I can, I'll reach out to you, Gail, and I'll send everybody an email. With, with links to it to get it done. You got?
Uh-huh.
Anything else?
No.
Ricky?
Well, as far as the water and sewer has been pretty quiet, which is amazing. Uh, I got a phone call from Nolan Pazin today about the insurance, and I'm going to meet him at the village office at ten o'clock. And we'll take care of it. I get that. And I got the new budget for, uh, the water sewer plant. Or not the budget, the, uh, whatever, for Joe with him, the new contract. There's some issues I have with it, but I'll, I'll discuss it with you eventually.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay, yeah, should, give me, do you have my number?
Yep, I sure do.
Give me a call tomorrow. I should have some time tomorrow afternoon if you want to chat about it, because I think that's ready. That's waiting for my.
Yeah, that's next month.
Okay, so I won't sign it till I talk to you.
Okay. Other than that, I'm done.
Alright. Tell? Anything else? MJ?
Um, let's see. Oh, yeah, we need to, um, pass a resolution for the, uh, the election next year, believe it or not. I just noted that we're overdoing that, so you need to pass a resolution for March sixteenth, I believe, for two trustees and mayor position.
Okay, is it, is it March sixteenth? Is that the Tuesday?
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so the resolution will be to hold village elections on March sixteenth for two trustee positions and the mayor. Did I get that right?
Yes, that's it.
Would anyone like to make that resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Ricky? Thank you, Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And did you, I forwarded an email to you, Stefan, from the New York State Parks Association or?
Been in touch with them. I've got a meeting on.
Alright, and I think that's it.
Okay. Um, top of my list, I'll hit it one more time, Rob. Let's make sure we touch base on this Neymar response. We at least need to get out of two weeks.
Yeah, I just, I just need a, that letter.
Yeah.
Barry joke and send that again. I appreciate it, uh, just to refresh myself with that, so.
Okay. Second thing on my list is I have a meeting on Monday with Parks and Rec and a meeting next week as well with Sinek Hudson. Uh, they've done the appraisers on the six and a half acres of waterfront down there. Um, so that, that is, the pre-acquisition process is still moving forward, although I don't have any more details than that yet. I meet with them next week. I mentioned a landscaping plan, landscaping and lighting plan for the DPW building. Uh, so I'll touch base with Jason. I've got him just sketching out a very simple plan there on that. We talked about the Stewart House already. We talked about the solar impact statements already, and we talked about the electric line past the Hudson Athens Lighthouse already. So it was everything on my list. Alright, so that'll wrap up this meeting. We are going to go into.
We have one question. Uh, Wayne wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, uh, sorry, I missed about the whole code enforcement thing. Uh, what's going on? We got charged for a hundred dollars when I had a call for, um, Stella's?
Yep, for after-hours call. Just use, use our code enforcement.
But what if they're not available? We're going to hit.
They're not available, then you call the town and we'll pay the hundred bucks.
Oh, okay. Now, I've been asked about, are they able to do both at the same time, be on patrol and code enforcement and so, so, okay?
Yes, they are. We've got an agreement with the police union.
Gotcha. Alright, fucking let it bring now when they stop asking me that.
Okay.
Okay, that was it.
Alright, so that will wrap up the normal meeting. We want to adjourn it because we'll go into executive briefly. Uh, again, we will, uh, it's, it's tough to do on Zoom. What I will tell you is immediately after adjourning from the executive session, we will adjourn the meeting, so there will be no more business conducted after the executive session, because I don't know how to coordinate that if anyone wanted to join back up on Zoom, so. Uh, with that, I'll ask everybody, everyone not affiliated with the board to please disconnect so we can have an executive session. Make sure we stop recording as well, please, Amy? Would anyone like to make a motion?